We will call the meeting to order. Skyler Community Schools and its partnership with the parents, students, and the communities committed to educate students to become skilled, knowledgeable, and responsible citizens in a global society. Notice to the meeting was given in advance according to state law by giving notice to the meeting to the public. Notice of the meeting was also given in advance to all members of Board of Education. We will begin with the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. This meeting has been preceded by advance notice and is hereby declared to be an open session. Top of the open meeting act is posted in the front of the meeting room. I will entertain a motion for approval of the consent agenda.
I move to approve the consent agenda.
I will second it.
And moved and seconded, any items?
I think our cash is pulling. This is the second month of deficit spending and so we always worry a little bit about where cash is. We're about one and a half percent ahead as far as spending, so we're watching that pretty close, see how we keep that close to what we anticipate, so.
Sally, call the roll.
Robyn.
Yes.
Yes.
Hernandez.
Yes.
Simrad.
Yes.
Bobbercheck.
Yes. All right. I'll look for them. I don't know if we have anybody here that wants to share their story, but we will limit it to five minutes. Any takers? Okay, well, we'll move on then. Most didn't wrap. Committee assignments. Seen your packets, went through and made some committee assignments. Understand that, you know, we want to push things a little bit more than we did last year. Foundation, I mean, I think foundation has met very consistently, but we want to have other areas meet as well, particularly with board policy and handbooks. And there's certain times of the year that they're probably going to meet, likely what April, May timeline for that, for that type of thing. You know, the budget and billing and ground, they meet fairly consistently. Funds, et cetera. As far as the planning, the calendar, et cetera, that's something that, you know, we get set for the year, so there's a few meetings ahead of time and those types of things. But again, if you see your name on there and you have concerns about participating in that and would like to be in another category, please do not hesitate to say something to me and we will see what we can arrange, okay? Because we do definitely want to have more interaction with, with board members on those specific issues. If anybody has any comments or questions regarding to that or any issue.
I just have a comment on the American Civics. It used to be called the Americanism Committee. It's the only committee required in statute. It's changed this year, so I put the statute in there for you, but that committee is going to need to meet with teachers and administrators, okay? So read through that statute, principals, because we're going to need to set up a time. The whole board doesn't necessarily have to meet, but the American Civics Committee has to meet with them. So make sure you read that statute and we'll make arrangements for whether it's a Friday afternoon or where, where it is that that committee meets. I would also suggest that if you have a conflict and that committee can't meet, that you find a replacement for that one, because we're going to have to go on record as far as making sure that that committee meets, so.
Is there a limited, I mean, is there, you have to meet a minimum of times or it's just, I just was wondering what the statute said.
You just have to give to me twice.
Twice or once.
Yeah, right.
Oh, okay.
So.
That one has three members required.
Yeah, that's the three members, but if we, if we meet once, then what I anticipate is that that committee will then say, we would like you to report at a board meeting, which will be your second required time, and then you can have public testimony at that, so. So just read through the statute and we just need to make sure that we follow the new requirements for that. We think it's going to change again this year because there's some more concern about it, and so we'll see what changes are made for that statute, but.
I guess I kind of talked a little bit. We should have probably had the motion before the discussion. It's fine if someone would like to make that motion.
I'll make the motion to approve the board president's recommendation on 2020 board committee assignments.
I'll second.
Okay, any further discussion? Okay, Sally, call the roll.
Lanusa.
Yes.
Hernandez.
Yes.
Simrad.
Yes.
Bobbercheck.
Yes. Yes. All right. Central Nebraska Rehab Services.
I'll make the motion to approve the contract with Central Nebraska Rehabilitation Services for Physical and Occupational Therapy Services.
Question is, do you want it for one or three years?
Oh. Did I not, oh, I didn't read that one down there. Oh. Oh, I see.
What is our current, what was our current contract?
Same, basically. It, it always goes by the state reimburse rate. So. And so.
And we don't feel that rate is going to go down likely or.
Well, the state controls it, so.
So we've always done a three or we've always done a one?
Well, we started back with Nebraska Central two years ago.
Oh, okay.
Okay. And I think it's, I don't know, the principals are here as far as they're the ones who kind of oversee and work with our physical therapists and occupational therapists. We, we think the service is pretty, pretty good. Just know this, that when their rate goes down, reimbursement goes down, so, you know, I mean, it's up to you if you want to do it one year or three year, but it saves you a little money. So you can make your choice if you, if you want to go year to year, that's fine.
How would you like?
Well, I don't know. I didn't see that down there. I was looking at the top part, so. I don't have a problem with doing a three-year contract if.
I'll second the motion. Further discussion?
I did attach that contract. So the three-year contract in there has, because the mileage rate is by state approved rate, travel time, same bill rate. If you do a three-year, then you get a $2 an hour break on your physical therapy, occupational therapy. And we don't do speech with them, so. I still through the service unit.
Sally, call the roll.
Hernandez.
Yes.
Simrad.
Yes.
Bobbercheck.
Yes.
Robyn.
Yes.
Lanusa.
Yes.
And if you notice in that letter that either party can terminate the agreement upon 60 days prior notice.
So even though it's three years, we can say after a year now, we had someone approached us.
Depends on who, well, or depends on who they send out as the therapist, and if it doesn't work, we can still. So there's a little protection.
Okay. Go into personnel.
Motion to accept the staff's resignation and wish them well in their future profession.
I'll second the motion.
In this motion, we have Mr. Kovar, who is here, has accepted a position with Mead Public Schools as K-12 principal. Mrs. Burton has accepted a position back in her home district at Oakland Craig as a 712 principal. And Robin says he's going with her, so. Apparently that's automatic. And then you saw the letter from Rachel Hansen, her husband got transferred, and so it'll be a pretty tough commute from Tennessee.
Yeah. Well, absolutely, we'll miss all of them, but we do wish them all success going down the road, so.
Sally wants to go to Tennessee. She's a Nashville person.
She is, she is.
Stay with them.
Sally, go ahead and call the roll.
Simrad.
Yes.
Bobbercheck.
Yes.
Robyns.
Yes.
Lanusa.
Yes.
Hernandez.
Yes.
I'd move to approve the 2020, 2021 principal and director contracts as presented.
I'll second.
On the board, you can see that we made the recommendation and we visited with the middle school staff about, about moving Mr. Zavodil up to principal and then advertising the assistant principal. Did meet with the board committee on salaries and we looked at, and I placed those comparative studies at your places tonight as well as posted them on there. So you should be able to see how our administrators compare with area schools, much like our teachers, that there's an array of schools that are selected for our teachers and our principal, our principals compare with that array, with that group. So the salaries posted on our board meeting tonight, because I did include that on our board, that posted their salaries.
Again, we've, as the committee met and discussed various things, one of which is, you know, we're very, very pleased with the staff that we have and wanted to make sure that we try to get support in the area of, you know, somewhere in the middle. We don't want to be, we can't afford necessarily be in top if we're going to keep our student costs down, but we don't want to be at the bottom either, and we do appreciate the efforts that the administration does make and, so that's some of our discussion that was going on, so. Yeah, looking, looking where we're at compared to the other schools, like Rich said, I don't know that we want to be at the top of all of them, but we do realize we got certain challenges here in Skyler and administrators are doing a great job meeting those challenges, so that's, I don't know, we want to keep the, the salaries, you know, to, on the top half of those arrays, and that's, that's where we feel these raises will put us and reflects the good work that all of you guys are doing.
Any other comments or questions?
If not, Sally, call the roll.
Bobbercheck.
Yes.
Robyns.
Yes.
Yes.
Hernandez.
Yes.
Simrad.
Yes.
Okay, next item, school calendar.
Not for board adoption yet. We've had several meetings with administration and I met with SEA last Friday, talked through all the recommendations, and both the SEA and the administrators agree that this is a calendar that we would like to present. However, we're still, there's still a half a day in there that we're not sure where that's best put that benefits our staff, because our calendar, we don't like that it falls for a half a day on the Monday after they're out, and so we're looking at where would that half a day work better to benefit our staff, and so. But we agreed that we present it to the board at this point for your thoughts and comments for a month. If you have any ideas, we're open. Otherwise, we have to look at what we do at the half a day. May come, we invite all our new staff in for a day before the regular staff comes, and we may look at something where he just didn't have a half day to set up the room or something. I'm not sure what we'll do, but we're just in discussion with them, what that half day best fits. Other changes to this calendar? Looks like we did a full day of high school tech and it's a little bit long for those kids, that we went to a half a day tech and then a half a day staff and put parent teacher conferences on that evening and then the next day on a Wednesday and then gave Thursday and Friday as fall break. And instead of this Friday, so works in our, with our activities calendar. The other change is the half a day before Thanksgiving. The staff who spoke up and put their thoughts out there for thought exchange, like the day in January that we did our strategic planning there, gave us a little bit more, more time, a little more chance for staff to get involved. And so we're looking at moving that strategic planning day to that, to Martin Luther King Day. And then give them that day before Thanksgiving, that's that half a day we're short.
Then they have the whole day.
Yeah, then they have the day to travel, that's, so. Anyway, those are, in a nutshell, basically changes that we made to this calendar. We still have two weeks and three weekends for Christmas. That was pretty popular with our staff. So not a lot of other changes, but we're open to board input for a month, and we'll bring it back in March. And I'll meet again with SEA before next meeting. So if you, if you have any input for us, we'll take it, and I'll take it back to teachers. And if the teachers have any other ideas or thoughts, well. But there were, there were no real big issues, you know, so it's like, it's pretty amiable on both sides, so.
Well, it seems to be pretty, a pretty clean schedule this year, so if we're not changing a whole lot, it would just, it's going to be just as good.
Mess up and call off, snow days.
Yeah. All right. Party school report?
There was no report this month because she's coming this week, but she did, I did post the agenda of what she's going to be talking about, okay? So even though there was not a, a report, as a matter of fact, I'm not seeing that.
I didn't see it either, that's why I haven't.
I will post it. Do you want it? I know that I have that agenda.
I know, you had talked about her not being here, but.
Eighty seconds. I'll post that as soon as the meeting is over, so you have the agenda for that meeting, okay? Or I can kind of run through it real quick. So she'll be here Thursday?
Or tomorrow.
Wednesday.
Thursday, so Wednesday and Thursday. So she'll come in February 12th. Dr. Leftall, looks like he's on for looking at the chronic absenteeism. Dr. Head, who is her cohort in this, this year? What are C7 surveys? Do you guys take 7C surveys?
That's a survey that she did.
I see.
Working on calls.
We have our lunch, I see. I don't know if that's all, I'm just kidding.
Tuesday longer, right?
I'll post it so you have it, okay? But there was no report this month.
Is your Wednesday and Thursday? So we don't have to have any motion on that.
Staff highlights, one good thing.
That's all I was going to say, give us a good thing, Jesse.
Oh, man.
There's so many, I know.
Um, you know, we're really getting into teacher evaluation right now, getting a second semester teacher evaluations. I know that we definitely, it's, it's hard necessarily to spotlight any one person. I will say, Mr. Kaiser, though, is doing a really good job. He's a first-year teacher for us. He's coaching basketball. He did a lot of stuff with the youth programs with Mr. Kovar. We just got done with that, so. Things are going pretty smooth.
I was kind of thinking, you'd say, I'm thrilled to be your next year's middle school head.
Evidently.
Serving, so I stay away. Yeah.
I think that'd be a good interview at the paper, after this is over.
Well, I just have two good things. One is that the building will be left in such great hands, so he's for bringing Jesse as principal. It'll be a great feature for SNS. Also, just a highlight on our staff, just to piggyback off, but Jesse was saying, we just have some great teachers, the SNS Social Studies Department, they had two pretty filled days last Thursday and Friday with Discovery Ed and the ESC7, and they haven't been great. They were very productive days, and the professionals and then the dedication by that department is just steps above so many others, and that's what they hope for them.
Okay, great. I would just highlight our girls wrestlers, they sure there were 11 of them, and they competed in the first girls state wrestling tournament. Well, it's not sanctioned by NSAA, it was sanctioned by the NSWCA, which is the National or Nebraska Scholastic Wrestling Coaches Association. We had two young ladies, Carla Chacon and Evelyn Guzman, both on state titles. Proud of that, and our team as a group finished second, and then two less points out of about 30-some teams. They competed very well.
Great. State.
I'd recommend Mr. Seaver, someone, Mr. Trotter, placing students on state level. Mr. Seaver had seven FCL students qualify at District of State, and then Mr. Trotter had seven students qualify for states last year.
It's your turn.
I just found how a great year with my little first graders and we're really making more progress and showing good growth, and your scores are going up in their math testing.
Great.
Jared?
I got to go. Yesterday, the Knights of Columbus hosted a free throw shooting competition here, and we had a number of Skyler kids that competed yesterday. I know we had at least one champion, we had a lot of seconds, so fun to see a lot of Skyler kids competing in that, so my son Miles was in that. He made 21 out of 25 free throws, but the kid that got the most out of any division was also in his group, made 22 out of 25, so he doesn't get him moved on, but it was good to see Skyler kids are competing.
Good.
My good thing is, you know, similar in my report, I mean, I'm at that stage where I just can't keep up with the work that the ladies are doing, getting our curriculum documents all in order and getting that ready to post and look good for us, so we can have that public facing document. Should we write some down? Did I say something wrong?
Nope. Something I want to talk to you.
All right.
Just taught us something, so. Great.
Okay, so I, I don't have much to share, but I'm surely really excited for that the days are getting longer, so that means in spring it's getting here, so. And that I'm very sad to see good staff leaving us, but I wish you the best.
I guess, yeah, I will talk, the paper did a nice job of front, front page news on the livestock judging team getting to go to state, which I guess, I think I have highlighted our, our ag instructors, FFA advisors a couple times, but that's a sign of a step in the right direction, that they're making some progress, because I think that we weren't even getting to competitions and entering competitions, and we're, we're getting there and doing well in them, so that's, that's good.
Yeah. I'm just going to talk a little bit, you know, we mentioned the FCLA students, and I was up here for the speech meet Saturday. The kids did a great job, got, spent most of the afternoon here, but the FCLA kids prepared a lot of the foods and stuff for the, for the visiting staff and, and the judges and stuff, so that was, that was a nice touch, and they got a lot of compliments.
I could say a lot about the janitors and all their work and everything else, but I want to highlight one person. Sally is our most veteran person in our office, and she was looking forward to retirement this year, but she's staying for one more, and I am like thrilled. She's, she's really a staple in our office and keeps things rolling, and she knows that business and works with all the administration, all the staff, and all their orders and things that they need, keeps things rolling, so often behind the scenes and doesn't get a lot of credit for how well things operate, and so having her come back for one more year, I'm thrilled, so. Thank you.
Okay. Yeah, I'm going to stay and help the transition with moving. It's a little scary, but, because things are probably really going to change. In our office, though, I have the scholastic magazines are well under order. They're completing all that stuff, so we can get our order in. We're working with our, we're ordering paper already for next year, so that has started in co-op, where we order a lot of our consumable supplies will start after next week, and so this is our busy time of year of compiling all that. And then we'll move on to requisitions when we get that one done, so. And then school will be out.
Makes it go fast, doesn't it?
Yes, it does. It goes really fast, because I'm already in 2021 now. For me, for me, 20, this year is over already. I'm into next year, so.
I'm excited for Morgan, because in the after-school program, she got to start in January string program, and she's got 10, 10 students, six violins, I believe, and three cellos, and they're super excited about doing that, and she just, she's really, really enjoying it. That's a highlight of her day, she says, so. Anyway, so that's exciting that she got to, to start doing that in the after-school program.
I've seen Jesse wrote a little bit about it, so I might be piggybacking off of him, but with construction going on this year, the field house has been really, really busy with wrestling going on. With wrestling going on on Tuesdays and Thursdays, I mean, often there's a day that I drive by there and you can't find any parking spots. So just recently they opened it up on Fridays, which I personally appreciate because that gives me an opportunity to bring some of the kids that I practice with. And still keep them active.
Well, that first night, I went back and was checking things out, just on the check in, check out program. There were a lot of, a lot of students utilizing that facility, it's cold right now. It's, it's a good place, it's a really nice facility, so. It's impressive. I do know that I had to replace a basketball net that was just sprayed, sprayed just this morning, we replaced the basketball net.
Which means that they're actually making.
On the outside, I guess.
All right, you want to share a story?
Oh.
Come on, what's the highlight for the paper? Spill the headlines.
Oh.
All right. Okay, superintendent's report.
Oh, I'm thrilled, all three incumbents are signed up and running in the next election. So thank you for doing that.
Much appreciated.
Fire marshal did approve the current, the former nursing home, which I yell at every time I call it that. District building. They did approve it, it's, it's under business status right now, they did allow for offices and for. The alternative school started there today, right? Yeah. Yeah, they started today and. We're working on changing, getting that status changed to education and once we change the education, the fire marshal who is from, grew up in Skyler. Said, once you get that status changed to education, you can do whatever you want with it, so no restrictions, so.
That's pretty good.
You know, honestly, I haven't been looking forward, but had somebody comment to me about signage. You know, if there's anything we could do and maybe that's a, you know, could be a project for a group too with, you know, somebody. Pay or something.
Yeah, well, once we get to the spring, we'll look at some options for, we can do to put signage on that building to help make sure people know what's where.
That helps change the outlook of what it is to.
Yeah.
What is the, what is the facility's official name gonna be?
I don't know, the board hasn't named it yet, so we're still waiting for great ideas to come from the.
Maybe.
The elected officials, yeah. The high school edition, I did put the minutes from our last meeting in there and we've met. The project itself, the total project's about two weeks behind schedule. Had some, I think eleven days of some not very good weather to work in winds or cold or snow, but. The west wall was completed today, I think about two weeks to get the roof onto that gym and get that done, they're working on the second floor right now. They poured about two thirds of the kitchen area and they're trying to dry out the dirt. By hauling out and putting in dry aggregate to try to get it to where that floral firm up and they'll be able to pour on top of it. Trying to get it all enclosed. Weather permitting, I mean, the better the weather, the, the more they can do, you know, so trying to get back on schedule. We got a great onsite superintendent who, and Clay, Clay Kossick is really the overseer of this project, but. Nick does a great job of making sure that things are coordinated and that all the trades are. Are staying out of each other's way or getting things done in a timely manner, so I've worked with some building projects where the job site superintendent wasn't as good. But I think Housman is a good person on site that he is constantly looking at scheduling and ordering and, you know, so he's. He stays on top of it. So. One of the things that we did look at was, we looked at changing the entrance to the football field with the new parking lot and everything. And in our last meeting. We found that that area, because it's too close to the back of the concession court, to the back of the bleachers. There isn't enough room for that and so we're gonna move it farther to the west, which will put it more in the center of that parking lot. And the concession stand that we were attending, I'm putting under the bleachers there so that we could have a handicap accessible. We're now investigating because we can't get a drain in there. And we're now investigating going on the south side of the activity building and doing something there with concessions that would help us be able to. Get to put our concessions close to our restrooms and at the same time make it accessible for soccer, for our spring activities, so. We've not really put together a plan there yet, but that's what it looks like, that's probably where that, that facility will go, so. Anyway. We'll be talking with the building and grounds committee about that whole process as we move forward, so. Sometimes something not working out is really a blessing in the long run.
The kitchen and cafeteria area, is that still?
That's still for August first. So. And they, they know that we need that and because that determines our schedule and so they know that that's a big push. Good, so. If you notice that, that's, they're, they're working on roofing it right now and they'll get that dry again. As they get that floor and then the trades can, the weather isn't gonna hurt them anymore. So they're working hard at that.
Good.
They're gonna have a previous and week, so.
Yeah.
There's one cold day and there, but it's forties.
I don't think cold hurts them as bad as wind did, you know, when they were up high trying to work, wind hurt them.
Sunday was terrible.
Yeah. But it's like a lot nicer to work when it's nice weather, I'm sure. The foundation meeting is next Monday, we postponed it from, it's our annual meeting, so. We postponed it a week from today.
All right, any correspondence? Letters? Any other comments or thoughts to bring?
Nope.
If not, I will entertain a motion for adjournment.
Make the motion to adjourn.
Second. All those, they were signify by saying aye, aye, nay, opposed, nay.
This three year agreement.
I mean, just say something fun to, or ask Chuck, I'm not.
Was he listening on?
Not yet.
I'm administrator in this thing.